Yeah, this is all right. Whatever, hello? No, I can, it's on here.
There you go.
You can have that.
Don't trip.
Wait, whoa, wait, hang on. Is it in here? Oh, okay. It was in here.
I'd like to call this meeting the Columbia County Board of Commissioners' order for this Tuesday, November the fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. If you would bow your heads with me for a few minutes. Lord, we realize that you have continued to bless Columbia County. And I'd like to offer up a special thanks for what our citizens did for us this past week in approving the bond issue and certain election offices. We ask, Lord, that you've always been good to entrust us with things. We ask that you help us to be good stewards of those things. We ask now that you help us in this meeting that everything said and done here would be according to your will and in the best interest of the people we serve. By Christ's name, we pray. Amen. Do you stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the five United States of America. To the Republic. Mission. God. His will. For being just as well.
Once again, we have a call with all five commissioners present. The minutes of our previous meeting of November the first are in your booklet. If you're satisfied with their content, we'll accept a motion for their approval.
Move. Second.
Any clarification? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Mr. Johnson, I believe we have some redlined items as additions to the agenda. If you'd like to cover those.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with your approval, we'd like to add a couple of items. Item I, three A, proclamation for Business Appreciation Day in Columbia County. And then a legal matter in, we'll make that J one, Resolution sixteen twelve fifty-five, declaring the results of the election you just mentioned. And I believe that will round us out.
Okay, those are very important items that we will add and proceed with the agenda, those additions. Again, welcome to this meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Remind you that these proceedings are videotaped. If you'd like a copy of the disc, you may obtain one through making a request through Ms. Crowley here. We all got it.
All right, sir.
And also, there'll be a label on the website after a couple of days. Remind you too that you're invited to speak to this body. If you're not already on the agenda, we ask, or if you've not already filled out a form, we ask that you do so in the back of the room and bring it up to Ms. Crowley, who recognizes you at the proper time during the meeting. And again, thank of each of you for being here for this meeting. We're going now to our special recognition presentations. First one, and everybody is always excited about, and county government. For an employee is recognized as the employee of the month. Our winner tonight is Crystal Hill with the Construction and Facilities Management Group. Vice Chair Allen will make this presentation. So would you come on forward, those that's in that area? Or anyone that would like to?
Come on up, Crystal.
And Trey, would you ask all the parties to introduce themselves if they?
Sir. Congratulations, ma'am. Glad if you all state your names.
I'll stop.
Thank you very much. Crystal, it is my pleasure to present to you the Employee of the Month Award for November two thousand and sixteen. I've got a brief bio that staff wrote saying that you began your career here as a temp, your career personal staffing. You were hired on this full-time December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. Worked hard to make your buildings clean. Thank you, we greatly appreciate it. Couple of these guys up here really make messes. She pays attention to all the little details and is sensitive to the office environment and personnel who are in those buildings, who are the true definition of pride. Lives in Appling, have six children and one grandchild. Congratulations. In her spare time, she loves cooking, crafting, and decorating. She loves her job, and it shows in the quality of her work and the smile she always has on her face. He's of benefit to the department, well as the county. Again, congratulations, ma'am.
Yeah. Just held up a short and sweet word. I cannot begin to say enough about Crystal, the valued employee for Columbia County. She worked with us for half a year. Extremely proud to have her on our team. Pride. She is outstanding team player. She represents the county professionally. Effect for all her coworkers and management. Always has a smile on her face and loves her job. Very dedicated to her profession and to others. Starts excellent service at the county, does her job and does it well. Opportunity to thank you for the great job she does.
Crystal, you're extremely deserving. Really congratulate you. Crystal was actually nominated by director in the county who wanted her to be recognized for her. And we received a lot of emails about the great job that our county did. About you. So it's an honor to get to work with you.
Would you like to say something? Go on record for your children and grandchild?
Thank you very much.
Now, Mr. Johnson, tell us what the prize is for being Employee of the Month?
Actually, she will, she will get a extra day off with pay. She gets a little bonus check, and she gets her name on the permanent plaque of the Employee of the Month.
All right, congratulations again.
Yeah. Hey, I wish I could as good a picture. I wish I looked that nice in general, but you look exactly like your picture. I didn't have to. I knew immediately where you were when I walked in the room. Congratulations again.
Thank you. We do have a couple of people who would like to speak concerning rezonings. I would like to delay those till we get to that item on the agenda, if that's okay with Jody Thigpen and David Rivers? That's okay with you? Thank you. We have a declaration now, a proclamation for Small Business Saturday from Commissioner Duncan. Those that's going to receive this, please come on forward. Well, is the one lady gonna receive this? Come on forward.
Prizes. Columbia County, we want to be as business-friendly as a government can be. Proclamation used for the county to publish the specific date of twenty-sixth. But I'll read it. Proclamation, Small Business Saturday, whereas Columbia County, Georgia celebrates our local businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community. And whereas local retail sales exceed one point six billion annually. And whereas ninety, no, I thought I said ninety-nine. Ninety percent of business establishments in Columbia County employ less than fifty employees. And whereas Columbia County is home to more than forty-eight hundred registered businesses, many of which employ less than five people. And whereas the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, along with the Columbia County Chamber of Commerce, support our local businesses, create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve the quality of life. Now therefore, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, as Small Business Saturday in Columbia County. To encourage all citizens to support small business investments during the Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Sign and seal this fifteenth day of November, two thousand and sixteen.
Definitely. Well, again, Columbia County Chamber greatly appreciates the support of the Commission with this endeavor. We, again, do represent many, many small businesses in the greater Augusta area, having over a thousand business members as part of the Columbia County Chamber. So we thank you for that. We have done a lot of things this week to honor our small businesses, educate them on all the different things, resources that they may have. And again, have partnered with American Express for Shop Small Saturday, November twenty-sixth. So thank you again to the Commission in helping support Shop Small.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
There are a few coupons in this table.
Think the net values under the line.
Yeah, I think it makes the threshold. Best than a hundred dollars. Cause of coupons.
Gentlemen, we come now to our consent agenda. Multiple items that have gone through the proper committee and received the necessary three votes to be put on consent. Satisfied with this list, we'll take a motion to approve them as one vote.
I move. Second.
Any items needing any clarification? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Going now to our debate agenda under new business. Vice Chair Allen. We, we've had a lot of discussion about this item, and we have two people that want to speak, and I think with your permission, we'll, we'll do that and let Mr. Johnson say a few words before we have them come up. Scott, would you go over the conditions that's placed on this particular item and tell us the origin? I believe we had some in planning and zoning, and I believe there've been some by staff since that time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was an item that was presented some time ago and then withdrawn by the applicant, I believe, due to timing issues. It was brought back up again to the last Planning Commission meeting. Staff was, was looking to potentially table this item to be able to work through a couple of items. It actually went forward at planning and zoning, and they approved it at planning and zoning without actually reading the conditions the staff had placed on it into the record. Typically, when you get these, you get these with, with the conditions already in front of you, and the Planning Commission's already voted on these. We have talked about these conditions, I believe, with the applicant. And I know there's been some additional conversation today with Mr. Rivers and also Mr. Mills about the conditions. But I just want to be able to go through these conditions that the staff was wanting to place on this rezoning. And then, obviously, you can take any or all of them or none of them when you take up the item. So if you'll indulge me, I'll read the conditions as staff presented them.
Before you read those, would Jody Thigpen and David Rivers come on up to the podium, please? Because this is important, because these are some things you may or may not be aware of. Would you give us your name and address when we get started?
Jody Thigpen, four-two-six, Lea Road, Greve Town, Georgia.
David Rivers, thirty-fifteen Lake Forest Drive, Augusta, Georgia.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The items that we have as far as conditions include, number one, all building elevations and architectural finishes shall be approved by the Planning Commission prior to the issuance of any building permit. Finished materials shall include a combination of brick, stone, and stucco. Metal may be used as roofing material. The Planning Commission may approve alternate materials on a case-by-case basis. Number two, where possible, buildings and uses shall be connected by an ADA-compliant sidewalk network. Number three, dumpster screening shall consist of masonry walls on three sides matching those of the principal structure. Gates shall be fully opaque, complementary in color and design with the overall structure. Number four, signage shall follow the design character of the adopted Kroger Master Sign Plan as provided in RZ fifteen dash eleven dash zero eight and revised in RZ sixteen zero five zero one. Individual freestanding signs shall be limited to an overall height of eight feet, a length of fourteen feet, shall be monument-based and constructed of materials matching the proposed buildings, and shall be limited to a maximum sign face of forty square feet. Two individual freestanding signs are permitted for the development, one per roadway frontage. Wall signs shall follow the C two standards. The applicant is encouraged to consider a master sign plan with the parcel to the south if it is developed. Number five, no activity including delivery shall occur on the site between the hours of ten PM and five AM. Number six, all security and other lighting shall be directed or shielded to prevent light spill over to adjacent properties. A photometric plan showing that foot candle readings are zero at the adjacent residential lot lines shall be presented with the site plan. Number seven, a minimum twenty-foot wide landscape strip shall be installed along Lewiston Road and Autumn Trail. The landscape plan shall be prepared by a licensed landscape architect. And number eight, submitted concept plan is not approved as part of this rezoning. Those were all of the staff conditions that needed to be put into the record for your consideration on the rezoning.
We give the opportunity always for people who's requesting a rezoning to hear anything that might have changed since the last meeting. Maybe you're aware of it, maybe you're not. I mean, Thigpen, we know that you are in favor of this rezoning. Mr. Rivers, I know you, your company has a financial interest in it. Were you aware of these conditions prior to the meeting?
We were.
Are you satisfied that they would alter your desire to continue with this?
They would not alter.
So you're satisfied with those conditions being placed on there?
Would be.
Gentlemen, I don't think there's any reason to go any further if we can have a motion.
I, I just wanted to ask a question before I make that motion, sir, about, number eight, the submitted plan is not approved as part of this rezoning, is that?
I believe it was.
Can you clarify that, just to?
It was a concept plan that was, that was sent in, and we don't want to give anybody the impression that this concept plan is part of this rezoning approval. I believe they're gonna have to submit a site plan at the time that they want to do this. Connectivity to Autumn Trail is an issue. Mr. Strickland, is there anything else?
That this is the actual plan?
It's the site plan, that's correct. And I think Mr. Rivers knows that. When they have a, a project, they'll, they'll submit the proper site plan at that time.
We're aware of the site plan. The zoning's not contingent on it. I think it was more to show that we're aware of the pending right-of-way and.
Right.
Working with engineering to show a plan that they'd be comfortable with.
Right.
Concept that would work.
And, and although it is just a concept, it is my understanding that there is a agreement in, some form of agreement in place for the corner restaurant already?
There's an agreement in place for the entire track for a.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion? Or you want to beat this to death the rest of the night?
So.
Got to be somewhere?
So y'all have, y'all have plans of moving forward as, maybe as soon as the rezoning is approved and getting the process started?
Ready to go tomorrow.
He is eager. I, I know you are, but.
Riley and Thigpen are, for sure. Yeah, it's pending, following the determination here, we'd go back and get with our engineers and come up with the final site plan that the county would be comfortable with, and then from there, move forward.
As I'm not speculative at all.
No, it's an owner-occupier.
I do apologize, gentlemen. Does anyone else have any comments?
I have one. I just wanted everyone to come to support.
All right.
I have some family and friends that have been praying really hard for this moment for a very long time, and I just wanted to recognize their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. You realize that Mr. Rivers beat me in a member-guest golf tournament once?
Uh-oh, there goes one vote.
Do you need to recuse yourself?
Give me shots. Give me shots.
All right, sir.
I will be done, right?
All right, sir. I would like, I would like to, and before I actually make the motion, I'll say, I did have, this was, this was a tough one for me because I, I do have some concerns. I just want to make sure that this area is developed right with all the traffic and, and the gateway that it is for our, for our county and everything, so I would encourage strongly. That being said, it is, it is an individual property owner's right to do what they want to with their property, as long as they have the ability to, to live within the rules that the county set forth. So, that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning of four-twenty-two and four-twenty-six Lewiston Road from R one to C two with the conditions presented by staff.
Second. Motion in a second. I would like one item of clarification. These two parcels are in no way connected with any covenants on that neighborhood or connected to that neighborhood at all. Were they a part of the original neighborhood? But there's no limitations in that regard?
Thank you, sir. I actually meant, I had that in my notes to ask about Autumn Trail. Is there an existing Autumn Trail HOA back behind you guys? Not really active at all.
Any other comments, questions?
I'd like to have, just for the record, I do not, I am not opposed to the rezoning of that area, but I just want to make sure and get some clarification from Mr. Slotter or Mr. Castles that this will not, in any way, with the design not being complete out there, is that, is that an issue moving forward? Or, or is it a problem? Would it be better to wait until the design was complete? If you could kind of touch on those couple of things for me?
Yeah, oh. Name and address. Now, the applicant's shown a willingness to work with us on this. Now, they, they do know they're gonna have to be required to get a G dot permit along Lewiston Road ultimately for that project. And we have gotten with our design engineer to kind of fast-forward, look at their site plans, see how it would impact our roadway, and we feel really confident that we can make this work. Within, with, the way this, as long as he, he follows the boundaries that are within this site. Our design engineer expressed some confidence with the site plan. They had to do a retaining wall of some sort, but it can work.
Any further questions?
There sure are a lot of pretty lines in this design.
We need to quit delaying because Ms. Thigpen's holding her breath. She's been holding it for about five minutes now.
I haven't eaten today.
Any, any further comments? We have a motion in a second with conditions. Now, the motion did reference the conditions, we're clear on that. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you. I got two guys up here coughing their lungs out.
I sneezed once.
Mr. Allen, I believe you can proceed with the next motion.
Yes, sir.
Praise the Lord.
I make a motion to approve the master site plan for four oh-two-two Washington Road, subjected to the conditions enumerated in November oh-three, two thousand and sixteen, Planning Commission report.
Second. I believe this is pertaining to the Jones Motor Group. And I believe we have David here.
David?
Any comments? Have you aware of those conditions that were placed? No problem with any of those? I think this is to service your Mazda, new Mazda store? Any further questions? Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning at four oh-three-one Evans to Lox Road from S one to PRD. Portion of tax map zero-seven-eight parcel oh-four-eight A, give or take point-three acres, subject to the conditions enumerated in the November third, two thousand and sixteen, Planning Commission.
I believe this is in, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll say it.
Pertaining to point-three acres to permit a, in a development that was approved in June.
That's correct.
To allow it to proceed.
That's correct. A small piece was left out of that rezoning, so it's housekeeping to that process work.
Further discussion? All in favor?
I would like to make a motion to approve the variance to section ninety dash fifty-three list of lot and structure requirements located at seven-thirty-eight Jones Creek. Reduce the side setback to five feet for a proposed addition.
Second. I think that is self-explanatory, and I believe the, our group has approved the appearance of the addition.
We did, Mr. Chairman. This, and actually, they already got a variance one time, and we're, we're very comfortable that the distance between the houses here is, is well enough where this just really isn't going to impact any neighbors.
But I believe this addition is going on the front, so we are satisfied with the appearance that they proposed?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, good. Further questions? All in favor?
I would like to make a motion to approve the change of conditions to tax map zero-six-two parcel zero-eight-six C. With conditions to modify, with conditions to modify conditions of a previous rezoning, RZ fifteen dash oh-four oh-three, specifically to permit a fifty-foot right-of-way instead of a sixty-foot right-of-way, requiring sidewalks on only one side of Husk Box Way, and removing the requirement for a six-foot wide planter strip, subject to the conditions enumerated in the November third, two thousand and sixteen, Planning Commission report.
Second. I believe this has to do with avoiding some intrusion into wetlands, and it's very difficult to get this underway.
That, that's correct, sir. The original condition required for a sixty-foot right-of-way, fifty-foot right-of-way is what county code requires as a minimum. If we were to require the additional ten-foot, it would impact wetlands, green buffers.
The applicant wished to be here tonight, but he's been sick with the flu. Mr. Deering, and Mr. Baybaum is here. Are you aware of these conditions placed on this change? Further discussion? All in favor?
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution sixteen dash twelve fifty-three to sell zero, point zero-eight-five acres of property in improvements to the state of Georgia for use as a driver training facility in the amount of three hundred thousand pallets.
Second. Mr. Johnson, I believe this is to finish an agreement already done with the state to build this facility, and they funded a portion of it, and now it belongs to them.
It is, Mr. Chairman. The, the idea was that we would go in and build this building for them on our property. They would pay us up to three thousand, three hundred thousand dollars for the property. They're gonna use this on a very limited basis, but based on the way they issue their bonds, they would have to own it to be able to participate in this. We're very comfortable with that. We will have a joint-use agreement between the sheriff's office, actually, an intergovernmental agreement rather, with the state and the county. And it's kind of the first step for the training facility that was approved in the general obligation bond, so it'll be the anchor for that. Where the staff is comfortable with this arrangement.
Put some clarification on this. I'm currently drafting the intergovernmental agreement. It's a fifty-year lease the county will have, and so it'll have full use. I'm putting in the intergovernmental agreement that they have to provide notice if they want to use it. Subject to whether or not we have something going on.
Really, it's more like a grant, but it's an outright purchase just with the way the deal was structured.
Everyone understand it? Any other questions?
And the sheriff's in favor of.
There you go.
Oh, shoot, he'll take over.
Got a gun.
He'll take over the building for us, over with.
Uh, he, well, he, he's gonna have full use of it for fifty years.
So, all right. No, I'm just going to ask any further discussion?
So, they all own it, but we, it's like, it's like ours, and we have full use, and if we have something going on.
They're subsequent to us.
We, we are a tenant of the entire park. Landlord renting out a space, have all the rights to use it. Can have all the rights to use it. They're gonna put some language, they can use it, subject to peddling and providing notice.
And the reality is that we're gonna be conducting the training here. This is gonna be a regional training facility that's gonna be, we'll be conducting state training here. That state training will be done by the sheriff's department personnel. So even if it's a state training mission, it'll be conducted by our deputies and our instructors. So again, it's just a matter of, you know, we get, we built a four hundred thousand dollar building, we're gonna have use of it for fifty years, and we're getting three hundred thousand of it back.
Oh, if the roof leaks, who do we call?
Ourselves. We will have the maintenance on it.
Do we get a hundred years?
Fifty years is the limit for a, a, in our government lease.
Right.
I'll have my hundred-and-third birthday party there.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
See if we can get it back between the lines, sir. I make a motion to approve fifty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars to. to Metro Homesites LLC, tax parcel 061083K, to obtain property for the Columbia County Green Space Program for use as part of a future phase of the Uchi Creek Greenway.
Second.
There's that greenway.
Leave this purchase of 19 acres to move this along a little bit. Any further comments, questions? All in favor?
I make a motion to approve $1,280 for .08 acres, 061084, and $8,160 for .51 acres, 061084A, to Sally Lamb Wu, to obtain land for the Columbia County Green Space Program for use as part of a future phase of the Uchi Creek Greenway.
Second.
Any discussion of this self-explanatory, honor? All in favor?
I make a motion to approve the first reading of Resolution Number 16-1254, meaning the fee schedule for the recycling center to repeal any conflicting resolutions.
Second.
I believe this is a schedule of fees to also include our shredding service that we now have.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Other questions, comments? All in favor?
New one?
I think it's, I think I'm up.
Yeah, I believe you're up.
I make a motion to approve the proclamation for Business Appreciation Day for November 17, 2016.
Second.
I guess we don't approve it. You got to go back out there and get it back.
I appreciate y'all voting on this. I already read it.
This is a different one. That was for small business. This is for business appreciation. This one actually be presented to the Development Authority on the 17th.
I said corrected. All in favor?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 16-1255, declaring results of an election held on November 8, 2016, certified of elections superintendent.
Second.
We definitely won't approve all of this. Any questions about this? I believe this is a legal matter. You have any comments?
That we're certifying, that the voters approved it, and approved it in a bombing majority, a 72%.
All in favor? Don't see any other legal matters. Mr. Driver?
No other legal matters.
We have any additional requests to speak? We do have an item to take up in executive session, so with your permission, we'll accept a motion to adjourn briefly to executive session.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor? We are briefly adjourned. We are briefly adjourned. I'd call a meeting back to order. Mr. Driver, would you give us an update on our executive session, please, sir?
Yes, Chairman. We discussed one personnel matter and two litigation matters. No action taken on any of those and there's nothing further to report.
Do we have one bit of business left? Commissioner Duncan?
Yes, sir, we do. I make a motion to approve adjusting grades and salaries for employees as shown on the presented spreadsheet. Where's the presented spreadsheet?
Not being presented.
It's in your book under the executive session item.
Before we get too far, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Oh, this spreadsheet. Sorry. Forgive me. I assumed it would be...
You satisfied with that now?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your right hand. Thank those that stayed around. Thank my bride with the bad knee for coming out tonight and sitting there all bent up for this time. Is there any other business? I was reading endorsement there.
Bringing endorsement.
Ask, is any public comments, sir?
Do we have any public comments?
Gentlemen?
We have any reason to continue this meeting? Would anybody like to end this?
I'd like to make a motion. We go to the House.
I will second that motion.
Are we restricted to going to the House or can we go anywhere?
Anywhere. I'm going to the House.
Revised motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your turn.
Everybody's going to your house, Coach?